Yeah, I don't know.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. It's great to have everybody here. It's always good to have a full house. Welcome. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order on June 10th, 2025, and ask our city clerk to please call a roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Present.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Bray?
Present. I would ask Commissioner Thomas to do the invocation tonight, and then we'll remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to come together today. Continue to give us the wisdom to make the right decisions for the city. Thank you for guiding us every step of the way. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, this evening, we would request permission to add a municipal order to approve an agreement with K E S for the Hotel Metropolitan Executive Director search.
So move? Oh, no, I'm sorry. That's just addition. Yes, I'm sorry.
Just an addition, yeah.
Okay, and where is that added?
That would be under municipal order.
Okay, I see it. Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Okay. All right, very good. So we have one presentation tonight. Paducah Cooperative Ministry, Lacey Bowling, the executive director. Executive Director, we had, we had asked her, I know that Paducah Cooperative Ministry is doing a lot of great work in the community. They're kind of leading the charge. There's several agencies in Paducah that are dealing with homelessness, but I know Paducah Cooperative Ministry is helping lead that charge. And I think the commission really wanted to understand more about the connection between housing and homelessness. I think all of us, most of us saw a presentation by Lacey at a Fair Housing Luncheon a couple of months ago, and I thought it would be really good for all of us for her to give that presentation to us and allow us to ask any questions that we may have. So, Lacey, I'd invite you to come up.
Okay, well, I was hoping for a clip on mic, but this will do. This is fine.
Is that a joke?
Maybe a score.
Yeah, I mean, it was, but that's fine. So we only have 10 minutes, and that's fine. I'll manage. But at the meeting that we had before, the Fair Housing meeting, the luncheon, we also had food, which I did not see on the agenda today.
Here we go.
Okay, this is gonna be tough, but it's not there. But we don't have as much time. We don't have food, but that's okay. We can manage. We don't have a clip on mic. I really get uncomfortable when I'm not able to walk around because I have a lot of nervous energy that is really hard for me to hold on to. I thought that if I walked behind you all, your mics would pick me up, but I think I'll just have to stand here and deal with it. You think? Okay. So I'll just stand here and deal with it. I want to first let you know that I have not worked in the housing and homeless space for very long. I've been here at Paducah Cooperative Ministry for two and a half years. Before that, most of my time was spent in retail pharmacies. You probably saw me on the corner of, we used to call it, I don't remember, but anyway, there was a lot of commercials that you saw, and I would have been in a lot of your retail pharmacies here in town. You would have seen me there. And I spent a lot of time serving the community here, but also serving the community in Nashville, Louisville, doing a lot of things for other communities. And in 2020, I made the jump to working in nonprofits around Paducah. And in 2024, I began working, is that right? No, it was 2022 is when I started working at Paducah Cooperative Ministry. In 2020, I began a very long and illustrious career at Paducah Middle School as a sixth grade basketball coach. I, like many of you, thought that my career would take off and that I would be at least coaching D1 women's basketball by now, but I didn't. And I actually only won one game in my four-year career as a girl's sixth grade basketball coach, just one. And we didn't, so we didn't do a very good job. But what I did learn is that homelessness does not look like what we thought it does. I met my favorite, come on in, girl! I met my favorite point guard. Her name was Natalie. And so Natalie, I kept trying to tell her, we're gonna need some different shoes, Natalie. We're gonna need some shoes that are gonna give your ankles a little bit more protection. And Natalie, Natalie just kept coming to practice with flats, you know, the dunks, you know what I'm talking about, like low, low shoes. And I kept saying, we're gonna need you to bring some, some better tennis shoes to practice. And as people with money often do, we just try to fix things with one purchase, right? That's what we try to do a lot of times. And so I bought her some Kyrie's. Remember those? I don't know if those are even still popular or not, but I bought her a pair of tennis shoes. And she put them on, and I swear she could run faster in practice. She really could. And so she ran, she ran as best that she could. And then the very next day, what happened? Do people participate in these meetings? Do they talk back or anything? No, this is so boring. Yeah, I'll talk to you, but it's boring. So she did not wear those shoes the very next day. And what do you think was her, what do you think happened there? Yeah, go ahead.
She might have fallen and hurt herself?
No, she did not. So she didn't stay in the same place twice. She didn't stay in the same place twice. And so what did that mean for Natalie? Just say it out loud. It helps me. She didn't have her shoes. She slept somewhere else. Now, there's two different types of homelessness. One is as defined by the Housing and Urban Development, which is HUD. And they say that this kid didn't qualify to be homeless because she had somewhere to stay. But the Department of Education would say that this child would be what?
Homeless.
Homeless, under the McKinney-Vento Act. Has anybody ever heard of McKinney-Vento? A lot of people know Heather Anderson, right? Under the McKinney-Vento Act, which started in 1987, this child would be considered homeless. Now, a lot of people think homeless is the people that you see walking around downtown. I've heard it said in a lot of commission meetings, in the county, in the city, this is what we would call homeless, is the man that you see walking up and down the street. That's who you say is homeless. That's who you say is homeless. But what I say, it was my point guard in sixth grade. My children will have their college paid for, hopefully. My husband is here. That's what we're shooting for. A lot of us in our community expect those two children, my point guard, who never stayed the same place twice, who is not considered homeless by many, in fact, not considered homeless by the urban development, she's not considered homeless there, she's not considered by many elected officials, she's not considered homeless, and my child to behave the same, to perform the same. But I don't know that that's ever gonna happen. In 2024, 2025, Paducah Public Schools had 248 students enrolled in the McKinney-Vento programming. That means they didn't have a consistent place to spend the night. 248 students enrolled. Now, we all know that homelessness is a city problem, right? You all know that. That was also a joke. It's not a city problem. It's not a county problem. It's our problem. McCracken County had 212 students enrolled in their McKinney-Vento programming. Five students stayed at Fresh Start Village. That's our transitional shelter that Fresh, that Paducah Cooperative Ministry runs. I wrote it down just so I made sure. Tonight, a mom and two kids who go to Heath Middle School are staying at Fresh Start Village. In the academic year of 2024, 2025, 36 students from Paducah Public Schools are staying in Fresh Start Village or have stayed in Fresh Start Village. Tonight, six students from Paducah Public Schools will stay at Fresh Start Village. Morgan Elementary, Paducah Middle School, and Paducah Tillman are currently represented at Fresh Start Village. These children are homeless, but we're not counting them, and we have not counted them. These children are not counted. And it's tough when we sit in rooms and say, they should do what my children can do, or your children can do, or what your children can do. If I hear another time that these kids should be able to pull themselves up, or when I speak to a 40-year-old lady who cannot read, and she's been in a shelter, that's tough, right? That's tough. Our point in time count has gone up 71% from 2022 to 2024. That's the coldest night in January count, if you're not familiar with that. That's the homeless that's counted by the Housing and Urban Development. You're familiar with that, right? We know that. That's gone up. We're getting so good at counting, folks. We know where they're at. We're making connections. We really don't know how many homeless people we have because we don't even know how to define homeless people. Because we think it's the people that we see carrying bags down the street. We forget that it's the kids in our schools. But if we put that together, that's about 700 folks right now in our city and county. Paducah Cooperative Ministry wants to create a 50-bed drop-in shelter. Doesn't seem so bad now, does it? Now, how does this relate to the housing market? I did promise the mayor I would talk about that. Somebody keeping my time? No, nobody is. Great, perfect.
I'll give you a nudge if it...
Thank you, Mayor.
Just keep, keep going. You're, you're fine.
Thank you. This is gonna be a great day. Someone asked me the other day, what is minimum wage? Somebody tell me what it is? 725. In 1997, I started my first job at Mills Dairy Drive-In in Whitesville, Kentucky. What was the minimum wage? All right. What'd you say? I don't know. But even then, 725 ain't cutting it. Do you understand? So when you tell me that a fast food restaurant has $14 on their sign, is that gonna do any good? Housing wage in McCracken County is $19.08. What does that mean? That means it's gonna take you $19.08 to be able to afford fair market rent in McCracken County. Fair market rent in McCracken County for a two-bedroom apartment is $992. That means in order to be able to afford 30% rent, 30% of your income on rent, which is what a financial planner would tell you is responsible, is $992. At Paducah Cooperative Ministry, we're seeing people pay 50% to 75% of their income on rent. Would you loan anyone any money paying that? It's not responsible, right? If you're paying 75% of your income on rent, what do you have money to do for anything else? You've got a nice place to starve, is what you have. You don't have money to pay for the arts. You don't have money to go visit the nice places that we're asking people to come visit in Paducah. I love Paducah. I'm not from here. I'm from Owensboro, Kentucky, originally. I choose to live in Paducah because I love it, and that's what we want. I'm a native Paducah person by choice. That is what we want. If you want other people to choose to live here, we've gotta do something differently. That's higher than a lot of other places. I've got the number somewhere. It's in my head. It's gonna rattle out before we get to the end of it. I believe it's like, man, I can't even think of it. Oh, I wish I could. I'll get to it. So even if we could find people jobs that pay $19.08 so that they could pay $992 for rent, a two-bedroom, we are still short 3,805 units in McCracken County. 3,805 units in McCracken County. This is expected, expected to increase 39% by 2029. Is anybody really good at math? How much? What? If we increase 3,805 by 39%, we're looking at a shortage of nearly 5,000 units by 2029. Now, PCM's a great place. I do agree with you, Mayor. There are a lot of nonprofits that are doing some good work. I also agree that Paducah Cooperative Ministry is leading this area. But nonprofits cannot do this work. This is the work of our elected officials, local leaders, local business leaders. We have to have Section 8 landlords. We have to have landlords that aren't just Section 8 landlords. This is gonna take, this is gonna take us enticing people to build properties that are affordable for people. And I have to tell you, it might not mean as much profit for folks, but they're gonna have to do it. If not, people will not choose to live in Paducah. If not, people will not choose or be able to afford to do the things that we are asking people to come to Paducah and do. If we do not, there will not be a viable Paducah. When I worked in retail, we had an adage that said, "High tide lifts all boats." It's the same thing here. Now, I've got these facts here for you. We talked about minimum wage. Maybe I should have put this slide earlier, but I wanna put this in a perspective for you. At minimum wage, you would have to work 116 hours a week to afford fair market rent. 116 hours a week to afford fair market rent, $992 fair market rent. Now, I know you all know that we have Fresh Start Village, and currently, right now, we have 53 folks living in a 48-bed shelter. The average stay is 116 nights. 91% of the people that are living in Fresh Start Village have a stable income. 91% of the adults living in Fresh Start Village have a stable income. These are your taxpayers. These are your residents. They live on 12th Street. What is slowing us down at Fresh Start Village is there is no place to move people into. I don't know if it's me or what. I think I'm stepping on something down here. Our average stay is 100 and whatever I said, 16 days. In 2019, I think it was 70 days. The idea is that we move people in. Now, overwhelmingly, these folks are from McCracken County, overwhelmingly. These are people who have gone to McCracken County High School, Paducah Tillman High School. These are our neighbors. This is us. So something, something with us. This is our people, right? Now, I get it. We've gotta have somewhere for them to go because we want them to choose Paducah too. I think. I think we want them to. So there's gotta be a place for them to go also. And if we've got 3,805 units that were short, and we know they're gonna be nearly 5,000 short, I feel like at some point, Paducah Cooperative Ministry hands are tied because we keep trying to do a great job. We've got our staff here with us, and they're coaching people. They're providing financial literacy. We're giving people the tools that maybe they didn't have out the gate, and we're trying to combat generational poverty. And if we believe in move in, move up, move out, and we wanna do those things, there's gotta be somewhere on the other end to go. And so collectively, I would like to figure out a way that we can work together to look at what's on the other end of this. And I know we're working on the South Side projects, and I think that's great, but low, low units, it means that we don't have a lot of places for people to go. Here's the, here's the actual data from the Kentucky Housing Corporation that just kind of shows you, this is not just a, you know, this is not just a McCracken County, Kentucky issue. This is looking at the statewide. If you look there on the very end, and that's on the, on, on my left here, the little red building, the people who have the lease are impacted the most. So average or area media, median income, 60,385 units, that's the biggest shortage. So people who have the least amount of that area median income have the biggest shortage. Does that make sense? So 60,000 rental units across Kentucky for the poorest folks. That's where you have to put your effort, right there. So natural disasters, lack of construction companies, people are building 2,400 square feet homes and bigger. That trend is solid. But what we're not seeing is folks building 1,400 square feet in smaller homes that our first-time homebuyers can buy. I'm just getting really close to the mic so everybody understands that. That is where we're not building. This is what 2029 is gonna look like, 287,000 units for 2029. This information is provided by the Kentucky Housing Corporation. This is your 39% increase. So this is what 2029 is gonna look like. If we do not do something now, these homeless numbers, 248 in Paducah City Schools, 212 students in McCracken County, 192 homeless people counted in our most recent K-count that we've received the numbers 2024. These numbers are gonna look like baby numbers to you because there's nowhere for people to go. Homelessness is a housing issue. If we played musical chairs right now, do you might go to the Chiefs game on Saturday? Do you might go to the Chiefs game on Saturday?
I did.
Buzz, I did too. I didn't see you there. Okay, at the end of the eighth inning, at the end of the eighth inning.
Are we about in the eighth inning here?
Yes, sir. This is the stretch. It's only been nine minutes, sir. At the bottom of the eighth, they do Dizzy Bat, right, Buzz? So let's put 10, let's put 10 chairs right here in the middle. But Buzz has to do Dizzy Bat. 10 people, Buzz has to do Dizzy Bat. Nobody else has to do Dizzy Bat but Buzz. What do you think Buzz is gonna get a chair? Yeah, right? Of course. It'll just take him a while. But let's remove a chair. Buzz still has to do Dizzy Bat. He's gonna get left out, right? Are y'all going with me on this? So did Dizzy Bat cause Buzz to lose his chair? Or did the shortage of chairs cause Buzz to lose the chair? That's all I'm saying. It's the shortage of chairs. Now, he was predispositioned to lose the chair because I made him do Dizzy Bat, right? What questions do you have?
Questions from commissioners, comments?
No question, Budges. Thank you. That's valuable information that our community needs to know and understand. So I definitely appreciate you sharing that and presenting that for us.
I agree. And that's the housing part was really interesting, which we've done a, we've done our McCracken County, you know, city, McCracken County planning, and it absolutely corroborates with this. Of course, it's not as focused on the, the low-income or homeless, but it just, it shows there's a huge deficit of homes.
Well, yeah, I think the issue is nobody's really looking at this stuff. They're putting it all together. I think that's a big gap. You've gotta have somebody putting all those pieces together.
Well, you mentioned the South Side Plan, and, you know, we're taking steps to, you know, to officially adopt the South Side Plan. And once we get that adopted, we will be coming back with some significantly higher incentives for developers. And one of the things that have, I mean, you can't, it's hard to build a house for, you can't build a house for $100,000. You can't build a house, it's hard to build a house for $150,000. So when you build a house, there's gotta be some incentives for developers to be able to, to want to invest that money and, and be able to sell that, that home.
Take risk.
Take risks, especially for a first-time homebuyer. So we're working closely with CFSB. They've been a good partner, you know, working with our planning department. And so we are, it's taken longer than, you know, for sure than what we wanted to, but we are on track, and, and those will be, will be coming out. And so that's one way we're, we're definitely focused. You know, the, the Housing Authority has gone through some, you know, some significant leadership changes. And I just had lunch with the executive, the interim executive director this past week. And I know that they've had trouble turning over some units there, which would make more units available. But I know that there's, I think the number that she mentioned to me was 20-plus, you know, that are in turnover mode right now. So to the degree that we can, we are, we are working hard. We recognize the, the things that you're, that you're talking about. We recognize the, the things that you're, that you're talking about, but it's really good to have, you know, for all of us, you know, to understand the connection between, between housing and homelessness and how much, what, which drives the other. Because people get back on their feet, and slowly but surely, they're looking for a place to live, and if there's not a place to live that they can afford to live, then they've got nowhere to go.
Yep.
So.
Lacey, I want to go back to PCM and your needs. I know that you all are wanting to build a shelter, and I think you said for 50. Does it serve, will it serve families as well? I think that would be good if you, I, I know a little bit, I've been there with you Friday to tour. Can you just say that, how that would help address some of the needs for the, these students especially?
Yeah, we, this will be a, we think it will be a stopgap for, right now, we're receiving 115 calls for shelter, and we can only get 12 people in at a time in Fresh Start Village. It will certainly serve families and also individuals, men and women, and families as well. We had a lady call today with a mom and a son, and she needed shelter immediately. She's paying for hotels a week at a time, which is not financially advisable, but there's nowhere else to go. Because there's nowhere to go. If we had our shelter, she could have stayed with us tonight. Unfortunately, it's not there. But yeah, it would be, it would be available for her.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, thanks for asking.
James Baldwin, I often quote him saying that we can't fix what we do not face.
Yeah.
And so I just want to thank you for effectively articulating another thing that we need to face and fix.
I think it's the root of what we can do, because fix, fix stability, and think of the things that the folks that we serve could do, right? I mean, that's, that's kind of the root. I mean, they're used to, they used to teach us about that triangle, you know, and shelter was the bottom, and we're neglecting it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Lacey, for being here, and thank you to the board members, supporters out here that came, you're doing amazing work, and we thank you.
Ready to go.
Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda.
There you go.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. We have one public comment tonight, and that's our friend Randall Barnes. Randall, come on up. I can say you're my friend because this says gratitude, so I know I'm in a safe zone.
Gratitude, but it turns out grateful to hear the presentation. Thank you very much. I'm also very grateful for this commission, the Brooks Stadium Commission, and Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. You can have, there's no speaking limit for him, is there?
Paducah Tillman Girls needed a softball field, and now they have a new place by Brooks Stadium. The news that I heard was even more exciting because Paducah Independent Schools have to demolish the Forest Hills School Building after far too many decades. So, thank you so much, Mr. Smith, Commission, and Brooks Stadium Commission.
Thank you.
We'll still play kickball one day.
Thank you, Randall.
Shouldn't take but a second. Thank you, Ms. Bowlin, for the update on homelessness. I always say, though I don't live here, I love here, so homelessness is something I've worked with in Chattanooga, Tennessee, and things like that. So what most people don't realize, the average age of a homeless person is nine years old. And that's because you have a mother, like she mentioned, with two or three children, and you average that age. So it's not just these grown men and women you see on the street, it's children, and it's a lot of them. So thank you for your efforts, and I would love to work with you on that. And on that note, you mentioned, Mayor, that, you know, the average home, $100,000, you can't build it, but there's a facility out there that was closed down a couple of years ago at 28th and H.C. Mathis Drive, the old Holiday Inn Hotel. I go by there, I've counted how many units, it's 140 units in there. It was kind of a transient place, but it could be a workable situation if the right people got together to put some life back in there per unit. So I just wanted to add that, and, and I'll move on. I, I came today just to ask, is there any update on the Jotun, the South Side Jotun Project that I had sent an email asking for a little time to discuss? Is there anything going on with that?
There's no update. We're still taking that under advisement.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which are, items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The city clerk will read the items recommended for approval unless a commissioner has an item that they would like to be removed. So I'll ask the city clerk to please read.
Approved minutes for the May 27, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting. Received and filed documents, reappointment of Ryan Garner and joint reappointment of Bill Bartman to the Paducah McCracken County Convention Center Corporation Board. These terms shall expire June 30, 2028. Appointment of Alexis Mars to replace Heather Coltharp, whose term expired, and Janet Dawson to replace Michael Campbell, who resigned to the Historical and Architectural Review Commission. Said terms shall expire June 10, 2028, and November 27, 2026, respectively. Appointment of Leslie Heath to the Paducah Planning Commission to replace Mickey Carman, who resigned. Said terms shall expire August 31, 2027, and personnel actions.
So moved.
Second. Call roll.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye. So the first item on the agenda is a municipal order, and I'll ask the city clerk to read it, and then, it's Hope here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll ask Hope to come up. Go ahead.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement with Kissner-Eddy Executive Services, Inc., Keys for Executive Search Services Related to the Hotel Metropolitan Executive Director Position."
So moved. Second.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, City Clerk. Tonight, we have brought this before you. This is part of our ongoing partnership with the Upper Town Heritage Foundation and the Hotel Metropolitan. In the original Mellon Foundation grant, part of that budget was designated toward hiring a new executive director for the Hotel Metropolitan. In our co-stewardship agreement, it was agreed upon that we would help take the lead in that role, and working with the Board and the Hotel Metropolitan, and helping secure that position through a search firm. We put that out for bid not too long ago with a request for proposals. We received 10, 10 proposals back. Of that, myself, Stephanie Wilcox, and Betty Dobson reviewed those proposals. We narrowed it down to five that we, the three of us interviewed, and we have come to the conclusion that the one in front of you tonight, K E E S, has the best qualifications. We feel like it'd be a really good match for our local small museum. They're very diversity-focused. I think it will be a really great match to help us find a new executive director for the Hotel Metropolitan.
Questions?
I did, I'm just, do they have, I'm assuming they do have experience in museum direct, executive directors and the arts and?
Yes, they do. They have, they, they have experience with public and private partnerships. They also have experience in working with organizations going through significant change. And so, yes, both with small, smaller communities and smaller museums.
And so the total fee is $28,000, is there anything else that goes with that after?
So the base fee is $37,000, that's the minimum. And then, yes, there are some expenses and travel fees that will go with that. We are planning, we, you know, in our budgeting, that that will be hopefully under $50,000 total.
You know, I'll just make this comment, there's been quite a few executive searches done, you know, in this community recently. It's expensive, it's an expensive process to go through it, and I think the fact that we got 10 proposals back, you know, to sort through and try to find the best one, I feel like that we, you know, we really look, we went through a competitive process to find the best one at, you know, at the best price we could.
Yes.
So, but, but they are expensive, so.
Very.
I'm curious, why, why are they so expensive? Like, do they give a line item of what they're doing with the money, or do they, how's that work? I'm not familiar.
It's a step-by-step process. I'm involved in one that's going to take six to eight months, by the time that they learn about your community, how to market your community, and then do a lot of, you, probably you, this is what I'm saying.
You're exactly right.
They do a lot of research, and they have usually a lot, an extensive network of people that they will reach out to, and then you've got to bring those people here, you've got to vet them through multiple methods, so it's, it's a very extensive process.
Yeah, they, they sort through all the candidates until they normally, it depends, you can work it different ways, but they'll bring you the final two or three. So to, and then participate in their interviews with you, and so it's, it's really a lot of time, and, and really expertise as well, you know? And then also, they have the sources to advertise for the job. So, you know, they have the connections, they know where to go, and try to get people interested.
They have a database, you know, that they work with. But, I mean, I think it's important to remember, too, we got it, we want to sell our own community too. I mean, they're coming, they'll be coming to look at us, and we got to make sure we're selling our community and how great it is.
Right. So, good question, though, and I would have, I would have exactly the same reaction if I didn't, if I hadn't been through it a bunch of times, you know, so. Okay, I'll ask the city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hope.
Thank you, Hope. I appreciate all the work you've, you've been doing.
Thank you.
Okay, we, we have the second reading and the adoption tonight of a very, it's very important, it's part of our budget process, and so the budget ordinance, this is the night where we take the second vote, and, and I'll ask, kick off by asking the city clerk to please go ahead and read.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky annual operating budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. This ordinance is summarized as follows, adopting the City of Paducah annual budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government at $1,037,778,934, and summarized by fund as follows. General Fund, $51,198,934. MAP Fund, $3,116,000. Investment Fund, $7,887,440. TIF Fund, $123,000. E911 Fund, $3,343,495. Opioid Fund, $53,096. Court Awards, $112,165. Room Tax Fund, $1,855,000. Debt Fund, $5,567,361. CIP Fund, $11,947,805. Bond Fund, $33,795,280. Solid Waste Fund, $8,052,519. Transient Boat Dock, $444,544. Rental Fund, $142,513. Fleet Maintenance Fund, $1,092,826. Fleet Lease Trust Fund, $2,853,765. Insurance Fund, $1,330,581. Health Insurance Fund, $4,045,470. PFPF Fund, $731,715. And Other Trusts, $85,425, for a total of $137,778,934.
So moved.
Okay, any, before we vote, any questions about the budget? We've been through it. I guess before we take the vote, I just want to, I want to say thank you to the city manager for leading the effort. I know a lot of other people did a lot of work, but I know started the process early this year, and it's not an easy process to go through, getting the commissioners together, it's like herding cats, trying to get everybody on the same page, so thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you, you're welcome, and thank you to the commission for being an active part of that, because without the whole team working together, we couldn't get here tonight.
I agree. I'll ask the city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye. We have one ordinance to introduce tonight, and I'll ask the city clerk to read it, and then I'll ask John Perkins to come up and explain.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2024-068815, entitled, "An Ordinance Adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government." This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the annual budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024 and ending June 30, 2025, as adopted by ordinance number 2024-068815, be amended by the following appropriations, to transfer $710,000 from the health insurance fund's fund balance to the fiscal year 2025 health insurance claims account.
So moved.
Senator.
Good evening, Mayor, city commissioner, commissioners, city manager, city clerk. I like that clip-on idea, that's kind of cool. This has been a very rough year for health insurance claims, and the reason we're asking for $710,000 more just to get through June, that's the end of a 12-year fiscal year, that those are known or, and/or projected costs. Now, the good news is, for many, many years, we've been blessed in the city, and we've been able to put money to the side. And so what we're going to do is simply take money out of reserve, and that health fund has nothing to do with the general fund, and apply it toward claims, claims that have already been incurred, and more, more coming. It's possible that the last half of the calendar year, you know, starts July 1, this could continue on. We've had some extraordinarily large claims. It's like I always tell people, this fund is actually owned by the citizens, of course, but by the employees of the city. It is, we're self-insured, and so whatever we put into it, or whatever we use, we have to pay for. And so we've, again, been blessed mightily in, in that way. And so have been able to put money to the side, so while we don't want to have to pay more, this is one of those times in the last few years that, this is why we save the money, that's what it's for. Anybody have any questions?
So the concept of insurance, you know, just to review, is that everybody pays in, you know, and some people use it, and some people don't. And some people use it more than other people, and some people use it less.
Yes.
And now, like you say, the way I understand this is, we've been blessed because we've had low claims. But in the last year, we've been hit with some, and it could be everything from, I guess, open-heart surgeries, I mean, different, different medical events, you know, that affect us.
Right.
That we have to pay out, and, you know, I'm just glad that we, you know, that we have the fund there, you know, to protect all of us who are participating in that.
It might aggravate people that are not using it, but someday they may, and they will be thankful when that money is there to take care of them, because we don't, we don't question, we take care of you, we just do. And this fund's been in place since like 1999, and we've done well. I think we've only had one year, and all those years where we actually raised the premiums on the employees, we haven't done that 10, 12 years, it's been a while. That is unheard of.
It's, it's amazing, actually.
Yeah, it is.
The fact that we have not raised premiums, health insurance premiums in the current environment is amazing.
Yeah.
So. So.
Hopefully that's not changing.
Right. Hopefully it's not changing. Any other thoughts or questions? Okay, so that was an introduction, so we'll vote. Okay. The next thing is, we do have an employee concern appeal, and I would invite Matt Meiser to come to the podium. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Mayor, commissioners, city manager, clerk, I appreciate the opportunity to come speak on this matter this evening. My name's Matt Meiser. I've worked for the city in, in the fire department for just over 12 years now. Here as part of step five of the employee concern policy. Have, commissioners, have you all been briefed on this at all? Okay. Have you all got a copy of like the four pages of our?
They have received that.
Yes. Don't have it in front of me, but have received.
It's in the back of your, your.
I do have a couple of things to pass out, if that's okay. It's gonna be, it's not our entire progressive discipline policy.
Thank you. Careful. They've got a copy, you've got a copy in your.
Okay.
Yeah, we need good copies. You've got a copy of all of HR7.
It's just the half of the four parts. I didn't want to waste a lot of papers. This employee concern involves disciplinary decision matrix and HR7, our progressive discipline policy and the interpretation of them. HR43 is our employee concern policy, which allows employees to bring up issues to their immediate supervisors all the way up to the commission if necessary. I'll give a little bit of history on it. In 2022, the Paducah Professional Firefighters Local 168 filed a grievance in relation to councilings being placed in personnel files. At the conclusion, councilings were removed from personnel files, as you can see in the appeal, in the employee concern paperwork that was filed and received. As you can see, the appeal to the HR director's, in the HR director's remarks, instead of just following HR7, the city changed the disciplinary action form to a notice of counseling or disciplinary action. HR7 makes no reference to the notice of counseling or disciplinary action form, which is currently being utilized. Fast forward to May 12 of 2025, the disciplinary decision matrix, I'll give you a copy of that, was put out to the fire department on Vector Solutions, our training system that we get out all of our policies and stuff like that to review and sign. Under the coaching counseling, it states the councilings will be forwarded on to HR. If you turn your attention to HR7, the counseling section, employee discussion procedure, section E, it states supervisors will keep dated written notes for their own use each time they counsel an employee, and only utilize the disciplinary action form beginning with the verbal warning. It says own personal use, not forwarding on to HR. In April of '25, I was off in my holiday time slot, from what I understand. Chief Kyle presented and explained the disciplinary decision matrix to cruise on duty. To the best of my knowledge, the reason the matrix was put together was to explain to the department that this is the way that we've always done discipline and helped the department to better understand. I'm a little confused as to why, when I submitted my concern to my assistant chief, my direct supervisor, I was, I received a response back from HR when it involves the fire department management who came up with the document. In my opinion, this skipped a few steps of HR43. In my 12 years on the department, coaching and councilings have always been the most basic form of helping our employees to understand how we operate on a daily basis. I'm in no way saying that we don't need to discipline employees when it is warranted. We just need to follow the policies put in place and use them as they were initially intended. I, as a supervisor, can counsel an employee, document it for my own use, and 99% of the time, we don't have to go anywhere from that. But if that said employee does not abide by the SOGs and city policies that we have in place, and then they do that same infraction, we can move to the next step of the progressive discipline policy and take it up the chain of command. For me personally, the most frustrating thing about working for the city is how there are policies that I and all the other employees are required to follow, and if we don't, we are disciplined. However, if management and the fire department is not following the policies put in place, and someone contests it, the next thing we know, the policies are changing. In conclusion, I just ask that y'all consider sticking to the policies we have in place and amending the disciplinary decision matrix, which I formally requested in my employee concern related to HR43. Again, thank you for your time and allowing me to come in and express my employee concern.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you very much, Matt, and you can be assured that we will look at this and it will be discussed.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Any other questions or anything?
No, no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have, the next topic of discussion is a discussion on, on a proposed spec building. Just by matter of review, I can't remember exactly the, the exact date, but the commission actually voted to support a spec building. The, the, the construction of a spec building on the part of, of our IDA. And so there's, there's been a question come up of how that's going to be paid for. However, I think before we even get into that discussion, I think, I think it's really timely, and we've asked Bruce to, to be here, to talk about spec buildings in general, talk about some of the history of spec buildings here in Paducah, and really, what is the reason that we're even considering putting up a spec building? So Bruce, I'll let you come up and make your presentation, and the commission will ask questions. Welcome.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Greater Paducah Economic Development, our board of directors, I thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you this evening about constructing a 100,000 square foot speculative building. But before I do that, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you for your partnership and your continued support with our organization. So the City of Paducah has always been a tremendous partner with our organization, and for that, we're most appreciative. We could not exist without you and your partnership. I also really appreciate Ms. Bowling's comments earlier this evening. Her comments really fall right in line with, with what we are at the core or at the heart of our mission about growing jobs and attracting better jobs and industry to the community. We have 22% of the city that lives in poverty. 40% of our jobs, 40% more of our jobs are in the retail, arts, service, those types of industries that have a typical wage of about $29,700 a year. A living wage is about $32,000 a year. So that really falls in line with what Ms. Bowling was saying. And that's where we believe the construction of a speculative building falls in line with what we're all trying to achieve. I think, hopefully, most of you are aware that our organization, GPED, we also manage the Paducah-McCracken County Industrial Development Authority. Mayor Bray acts as the chair of that board. McCracken County Judge Executive Craig Clymer acts as the vice chair, and they alternate roles every two years. But in line with that, through the Kentucky Product Development Initiative, GPED submitted an application for $2 million towards the construction of a speculative building to be constructed in Industrial Park West. The KPEDI program, it was very competitive with over $90 million in applications submitted with only $35 million available for funding. Our community was very successful, very fortunate to have been selected to receive 2 million of the 35 million. Over 65, over 60% of the asked were denied. We're in the top echelon, according to the quality of our product asked and the community that we have here. So that's something that we should really be proud of, substantiating site selections group and the Kentucky Cabinet for Economic Development's competence in what we're looking to do. Since being notified of our selection of the grant award, the grant will flow through the Paducah-McCracken County Industrial Development Authority with the IDA being the beneficiary. The IDA board has already voted to accept the award and authorized us to proceed with completing the necessary information to secure the grant. Since Industrial Park West is located within the city limits, it makes most sense for the City of Paducah to be the grantee through which the proceeds will flow to the IDA. We will need the City of Paducah to adopt a resolution stating such that you agree to be the grantee for the grant proceeds. So this evening, I've been asked to provide a little history on spec buildings in our community over the past several years. While only being in this possession, position for about five years, my knowledge is somewhat limited, but I reached out to Deputy Judge Executive Steve Doolittle. Most all of you know Mr. Doolittle over at the county. He was employed here at the city for a long time, and he has a lot of institutional knowledge, and he's a go-to person for me when I want to get some history on some things. So I talked with Steve about the history of our spec buildings in the community. The first one he brought up was the Henry A. Peters Supply Building out on Industrial, Industrial Drive, out going west of town. That building was constructed in about 1989. It's set vacant, I believe, for about six years. I think it wasn't occupied until 1995, until some swaps were done and some, some things were done to entice them to move out to that location. And then we have the River Heritage Discovery, Siemens Church Institute, and all of that downtown that's been revitalized with that. But that was a spec building that our community did some 30 years ago. The Coke Distribution Facility in Industrial Park West was another one. This appears to be the most successful one that the community has built. My understanding from talking with Steve was that Coke was looking to actually relocate to Hopkinsville. The community stepped up, fulfilled the need, and actually constructed the building to entice them to stay rather than move to Hopkinsville. So you might almost say that was an actual business retention and expansion construction rather than a speculative basis. But from my understanding, it's been a very successful venture.
Do you know how many people are employed at that facility?
We, we think we do. Jim Moore, my partner, Jim is our Director of Business Development here.
I may be jumping ahead in your.
Oh, no, no, you're, I appreciate you asking that, because Jim and I were talking about that today. So Jim also does business retention and expansion. He's actually done a visit with them in the past, and 90 to 100 employees. What, what you, what we anticipate them to be there.
Do you know how much we spent on the Coke building?
I do not.
Thank you.
Do you know whether or not the Coke building, the Coke folks bought the building? I mean, paid, paid cash for it, or?
I don't. I do not. The Ingram Water and Air Facility in Industrial Park West, this building, from what I can tell, was constructed somewhere around 2005 and sat vacant for almost 15 years. It was owned by Greater Paducah Economic Development. Just prior to my coming onboard with GPED, it was sold to a, I believe it was Global Gear and Maintenance, maybe out of Metropolis, Illinois. They acquired the building, didn't hold it very long, and flipped it, sold it over to Ingram Water and Air out of Graves County. Since Ingram has purchased the building, my understanding is they've put a new roof on it, they've installed docks, they've done a lot of site work, site development, and they've made it a warehousing and distribution facility now. So we do not know how many employees they have there. I'm sure we could get all of these employees through the city payroll records, through Jonathan Perkins and, and his office, if you all wanted more information. But I didn't think I would be privy to, to getting that. The other one of which I'm aware is the A&amp;K Construction Office in Commerce Park, or Information Age Park, as it used to be known. This facility was constructed, and was talking with Commissioner Wilson earlier, there were a lot of construction delays and issues, I think, in getting it built. And I think Kenny Hunt and A&amp;K Construction stepped in and actually ended up acquiring that, and that's been their corporate headquarters for a long time. But all in all, you know, whatever hiccups there might have been along the road, from talking with, with Steve Doolittle, probably about a two-year process on that, something like that. So when looking back at our community's experience and success with previous, previous speculative buildings, I can understand where there might be some concern, or at least the, the interest in doing some more due diligence on making such a substantial investment. So I can't speak really to the success or lack thereof in dealing with speculative buildings. I don't know how much or how little effort was put into actually marketing them with the individuals who were within GPED's organization at the time. But what I do know is all of them are completed, they're full, and they have full-time jobs paying living wages with benefits today. So big, big picture, it's working. It just not, might not have been as timely as what we would have anticipated or liked it to be. So, but what I do know, there are things that we can control, things we can't control. The things that I do know that we are doing today to market the community, market, recruit jobs and industry, is we utilize lead generation services. We use Research FDI. They use technology to help us identify companies looking to expand in sectors that we tell them, whether it be automotive, advanced engineering, chemicals and plastics, injection molding, assembly, those types of things. Jim Moore works with Bruce Tackefen and his team. Jim conducts four tours a year on industry recruitment, specifically coming from the efforts of this lead generation service. In addition to that, Jim is out regularly, and I do, not as much as Jim, but we're meeting directly with site selectors. Site selectors are people, are companies, that prospective companies engage with to help them identify where they're going to locate their business. We have about 200 direct engagements with those per year. I doubt very seriously anybody at GPED has had that much engagement with site selectors in, in the past. Those are metrics, Mayor, that you know, you're on our board, you see our metrics, we report out to that every month. Those are things that Jim and I are measured on, and our compensation is based upon that. We also have direct engagement with companies directly that he and I call on, talk with individually. Conservatively, probably 40 to 50 engagements a year with those types of organizations. And then a lot of engagement with the Cabinet for Economic Development. We have thus far about 175 specific engagements with senior cabinet-level officials, whether it be project managers, Secretary Knoll, Deputy Commissioner Slattery, senior individuals with the Kentucky Cabinet for Economic Development. It's very important to have relationships with them, because they are a, a large source for the lead generation. When you look at the number of sites that was promoted last year, the Triple Rail Site was the number one site that the state cabinet promoted. Do you know what the number five site that was promoted by the cabinet was? It was a spec building in Hopkinsville. From all across the state, it was 100,000 square foot spec building that was in the state's top five. Additionally, we put our assets on what's called Zoom Prospector. That's a state website that the state uses, and the site selectors go to, to try to identify sites and locations when they're looking to expand. And then, of course, we have them on our Greater Paducah Economic Development website. I think it's also important for us to not only look at what we're doing to be successful, but what our surrounding communities are doing. You know, we have great relationships with our neighbors in surrounding counties. You know, we're part of Kentucky Cornerstone, a collaborative marketing group, and we all work together very well and share information with, with each other. What we found from working with them is Amanda Davenport over at the Ettyville Riverport. She's currently in the process of constructing a 60,000 square foot speculative building with a cost of around $4 million, about $3.3 million, and it's going to be about $700,000 in utility infrastructure upgrades. One of the beautiful things about our site, where we're looking to put this, is all of the utilities are already in place. Not only gas, water, sewers, but electricity. Big Rivers has a substation right across the street, and as you all know, accessibility of power is of key concern in today's market. Princeton, Princeton's in the process of constructing a 100,000 square foot speculative building at a cost of approximately 8.25 million. at a cost of approximately $8.25 million. Now, they're finishing their building out. And I don't think it makes sense for us to finish our building out because, you know, I think they, from what we're talking, they'll be happy securing a warehousing or distribution facility. I don't think that's the type of industry that we're going after specifically for this because there's typically not a lot of jobs associated with them, and they're not the higher-paying jobs. And if, you can't really finish a site out or a building out because if you put an automotive assembly facility in there, whatever, you have deep foundations that go, that are strategically located throughout the building. So what we envision doing is building a shell. It's a pre-manufactured building with adequate ceiling heights, 22, 24 on the side, going up in the top, and then just putting dense grade in the bottom. And then, as we secure a project, they would determine where, if any, deep foundations would be inside the facility. The City of Russellville is constructing a 105,000-square-foot speculative building that's expandable to 210,000 square feet. That's going to be completed by October of '25. Estimated cost is about $6 million. Graves County, just next door. They're in the process of constructing a 150,000-square-foot speculative building in their industrial park that's expandable to 175,000 square feet. That's going to be finished in August of 2025, just in a couple of months. We've all heard of the successes Bowling Green has had. Bowling Green has mint several speculative buildings as a community over the past few years. They actually have private developers who've seen the success of those buildings, and they have a lot of private developers now that are stepping out on a limb and actually constructing the buildings and helping facilitate that. Glasgow and South Cooper Industrial Park, they have a 100,000-square-foot building available, expandable to 240,000 square feet. Kate's I-24 Business Park, our friend Carter Hendrickson down in Hopkinsville, they've got a 100,000-square-foot building that's available. Hopkinsville has won five projects using speculative buildings to entice them. In fact, just about two weeks ago, they sold one of their buildings, 100,000-square-foot building, they announced to $65 million food processing company with 900 jobs. That went in one of their speculative buildings. Couple of years ago, Mayor, you'll recall this, we were, it was down between us and Hopkinsville, or Toyota-Boschuk, $225 million project, 100...
160.
160 jobs lost to Hopkinsville. One of the considerations, deciding factors, was a building that's available, speed to market, and ready to go. So those are the highlights. I'm happy to get in the weeds or discuss or answer questions that you all might have, but I respect the time. I didn't, didn't want to go too deep.
It's very good. I appreciate it very much. So Commissioners, any questions?
I was just, I mean, obviously, you know, you know more about this than I do, and it seems like all of these other surrounding friends in the county, that this is something successful. But I guess what I'm looking at is how long it takes, or how long even these in our city have taken, in our area, has taken to get somewhere. Is that not a huge risk to? I mean, I don't, I don't know.
I think it's, for sure, I think.
To not know what's going to happen tomorrow or the next day or?
I think it's a risk for sure. You know, is it mitigable? Absolutely. I think we consistently do the things right, day in and day out, to promote or market it. So, I mean, there's no guarantee that we can flip it, you know, and have it occupied immediately. But you can look to the successes other communities have had, and, you know, if them, why not us?
Well, I certainly agree with that. I mean, I understand taking a risk and, but, yeah. Why not us?
Yeah, sure. I mean, just make a couple of comments, I guess. You know, I've been on the GPED and IDA Board now, going on five years, and I think both Boards really have identified a couple of gaps. People always come up to me and saying, you know, "Mayor, why, why isn't Paducah growing faster?" You know, "Why don't, you know, they see a battery plant go in somewhere, and why not, you know, why not us?" And so certainly, that's been a big discussion point, you know, on the Board. I mean, because everybody on the Board feels that pressure, wants the community to grow, and I think a couple of things that we've identified, not everything we're in control of. Geography, where we are in relation to feeder plants, or where people want to be, you know, we're not in control of that. We're here. But the two things that we identified that we are in control of is that the ground that we have, first of all, we have to have ground. We have to have ground to be able to market. And one of the big things we discovered is that ground needs to be shovel-ready. You know, because Bruce mentioned speed to market, and when a company is ready to move and ready to act.
They're ready.
They, they don't want to, they don't want to spend six months, you know, plowing ground, getting it ready. And the other thing was the spec building. You know, that we looked around communities, other communities that Bruce has outlined, you know, were, had, had used this strategy successfully. And so to me, the two takeaways I had was that clearing and grubbing, you know, of land, or getting it shovel-ready, you know, and then a spec building were the two things that I identified personally. Now, as far as risk goes, I mean, I mean, I remember, I remember the Petter Building, you know, when it was first went out there, you know, and you said six years it was empty, I think.
Based on what Steve said.
Yeah.
Give or take.
Yeah, I remember. I mean, I remember it being empty. And, and so I think the risk is not so much that it would, you know, that it would be empty, because I think that from the community standpoint, I think, depending on how we decide to finance it and that sort of thing, I mean, I think it's a risk that the community together is, we should be willing to take. It's just that we have to rely on you and Jim and, you know, the GPED team to market the building, and then we all have to stay together, you know, to, to try to attract the right, right company in there. So I think there's risk, I think the risk is more longevity.
Sure.
And then, from my standpoint, let's say we spend, call it a round number, $6 million, you know, after the grant, we spent $6 million. You know, some big company comes in here with 1,000 jobs or 500 jobs, call it whatever you want to, and they say, you know, "We want that building, and we want you to give it to us." I mean, because they're in negotiating mode. And so to me, there's risk, you know, as we get down the line where people, you know, try to leverage their position and jobs, and there's only so much you can do. I mean, companies want to come in, they want you to abate taxes, they want to, you know, property tax, payroll tax. So I think we have to be very, very careful about giving away our assets. And I don't, as you said, I don't think you really, I don't think you have the data that suggests what we spent on the buildings, the four buildings you talked about, what we spent and what we got out of them. I don't think we have that data.
Correct.
I guess we could, you know, dig and try to find that, but, but to me, that's the risk that we have to all have to be cognizant of, so.
And I'm curious, you know, like on the federal level, we see the President talks about more American-made projects. Will that benefit, have it, you know, benefit us, you know?
Great question.
I think you're, I think you're spot on, Commissioner Thomas. You know, three years ago, we lost a large automotive assembly plant to Mexico that was going where this building's set to go. 400 jobs?
Yeah, we went up and pitched that as a team.
Yeah, we did. We did. Had, had the tariffs or this administration been in place at the time, I think we probably would have landed that project. It was a company that I'd actually dealt with, was my previous employer, but it, first-class, tier-one supplier in the automotive industry.
So with that in mind, that kind of edges us on a better-looking side, you know, of the risk factor of it. So I was just curious about that.
Good question.
Yeah, no, you're, that's excellent.
How did you choose the location and the square footage?
So the location, Mayor Bray was talking about being site-ready. If y'all recall, a couple of years ago, we spent the money to clear and grub Industrial Park West, the remaining acreage, and then what happened six months later? Boom, we landed Amazon. The other parcel where this one is going to go is where this speculative building would go. It's right across the street where Big Rivers Electric, Jackson Purchase Energy, has expanded their power substation. So it, it would go there. The way we settled on 100,000 square feet is when you talk to site selectors, that's the standard size that most people look, certainly want something that's expandable up to, you know, we've actually looked at a project. The way we anticipate laying this out is we would, if you're standing looking at the vacant parcel in Industrial Park West, we would take 13 to 15 acres, put this 100,000-square-foot building on it. It could be easily expanded to 200,000 square feet, or a separate 100,000-square-feet building behind it. That still allows us, we've actually slotted in a 500,000-square-foot building right next to it on the larger parcel. So we try to maximize the acreage that we have left, but 100,000 square feet's the sweet spot.
A comment I'll make is that I think it's probably likely that these buildings, with the amount of people that they hire and all, I mean, if you say, oh, the city's going to get payroll tax off of that, and I don't see it really paying for the investment, you know, but I do think as government that our responsibility is to do things, help the community grow, and maybe not all of them are, you know, dollars and cents, but I would say that, you know, this type of investment for the City of Paducah would represent about three years of paving, $6 million. About $2 million a year we spend on paving. So it is a lot of money, but, you know, and I would say, most people would, might say that it's not a moneymaker, you know, but it is good for the community. But, you know, it just seems like we need partners, and I don't know, there's been no real discussion about the county participation, that sort of thing, so I think that's, that's key because I just think that you need that. I mean, whoever would come into a place, if they hire 100 people or 150 people, they're probably, you know, 60, 70% won't even live in the city. So I think it's, it's good to spread the burden to, along the community versus the city completely sponsoring these kind of things, so.
Well, that's a good segue into the next part of the discussion, I think.
Oh.
You know, that I think that we, that we want to move to, but I do want to, I do want to agree with you on one point, and that is that, you know, I've looked at the...
Just one?
Just, just one now. And that is that the payback, you know, really, when you look at payroll tax and you look at the tax itself, you know, that is directly is not going to pay for a building, you know, that itself. It's all the other things that come, you know, with that.
Induced and indirect.
Yeah, it's, it's the direct and indirect costs. So you kind of have to take off that, you know, that hat and, and look at the benefits to the community. So if you recall, I don't have the exact date, but, but when the first discussion came up about the spec building, you know, we, we agreed as a commission to pay for 75%. And just to give you a little history, there's been some discussion between the city and county. There was a clearing and grubbing project that went on out of the Triple Rail Site, and there was some discussion back and forth between the city and county as to how that would pay for. We first of all talked about the possibility of 50/50, and I think the city was, you know, had some concern at that point that, you know, the project was not in the city limits, it was outside in the county. So we offered to pay 25% of that clearing and grubbing, and the county accepted that, and we moved forward, and we're pretty far into that project, I think, I think now. When the spec building project came up, I, in turn, went to the county and suggested that we would pay 75% of the cost of building the spec building if they would pay 25%. And surprisingly, I guess to me, you know, they came back and said, "Well, we would pay 25% on the condition that we would get paid back out of payroll, half of our payroll tax of, on our 25%."
More like a loan.
Yeah, that, they suggested that they wanted to get, get paid back, and, and so I've sent you all a document that outlines their, you know, their suggestion, and so I've talked with all of you individually. I want to make sure this is something we can talk about in, in open session. If you've got any questions or concerns about it, and I just, I want to open that up for, I want to open that up for discussion. I certainly have some opinions myself, but I'm, I'm open to any questions that you guys have about, they're suggested.
I guess for me, the, I'm always about partnerships and us working together.
Right.
But I'm always concerned lately, it seems, that the county is always wanting more from us as opposed to just equally going along with us. And am I seeing that incorrectly or what?
Well, I would say in defense of, you know, I work very closely, the city and county, it's paramount that we work together, you know, and that we be, that we be partners. And, and I think that, I don't want to blow this out of perspective, you know, I mean, I think that we're not always going to agree on things, and it's just the, it's the, the nature of the two governments. We, you know, it's just, it's just the way it is. But somehow, we fight through, you know, any disagreements, and, and we, we always try to provide a united front. But sometimes we disagree, and they presented an alternative proposal to us, and, you know, I, I'm having trouble, as I've shared with Judge Kleimer, understanding why if, if we paid for 25% for the clearing and grubbing without really asking for to be paid back over time through payroll tax on a project out there, why it wasn't the, was, was not reciprocal. But at this point, you know, but I felt like, you know, the right thing to do is for all of us to talk about it together, all knowing, you know, that we, that we definitely, that partnership is, is what's important to this community. And so.
Was there an answer on that? That question, I mean, it does seem to me, we did not really ask for, to be paid back because we wanted to build a partnership with them. Triple Rail Site, I know you just said, has been marketed by the state as the number-one site, and everything that we can do to get it ready, some of those people would live in the city, we would benefit from that, and we went into that as a partner with them on the 75/25, but asked for no payback.
Correct.
So now, for us to ask them to do the same with us on a project, but they ask for payback, seems not as cooperative, maybe, as we would want it to be.
That's, that's, you know, that's how it seems to me, you know, I mean, I just, you know, this is one of those projects, let's go back to, let's go back to the IDA, you know, the way the IDA was formed, you know, and this goes back before 2020, but when the, the current IDA was established, there were loans forgiven on, on property that's out at that Triple Rail Site now. And again, I wasn't here for all the history, but there was something close to $1 million of property that was acquired out there over some period of time, and the loans were forgiven in such a way that that ended up being a 50/50 project between the city and the county. So we, you know, we have shown partnership, and, and I, I feel like that we've... partnership and, and I, I feel like that we've, we've been partners, you know, and really, I just, what, from my perspective, you know, I would, I would hope that our offer of paying for 75% for a spec building, you know, would be, would be, would be seen as a fair offer. And, and, and we would be, find a way to move forward. Because, because as we develop the triple rail site, there's going to be more, more need for, for money to develop that site. And I think that we need to get some of these, I think we just need to get some of these things settled down. Because there's going to be, there's going to be more discussions like this in the future.
We hope.
We hope, of course, we hope.
Mayor, I was in the room in a lot of those meetings dating back, and I'm going to age myself into the 2000s when I was chair of GPED and then chair of IDA for many, many years, all the way back to Mayor Paxton, who actually called today to talk to him to refresh my memory on some things. And the goal was, this was the best place, the triple rail site. At that time, there was a company interested in it. We were taking down land, getting it ready. And we did incurred debt on it. We had a lot of partners that were there interested with us. But everything was working together in a cooperative spirit between the city and the county, sitting in the room together on that. So, I mean, I feel like that is how we should go forward in a cooperative spirit with the city and county. And if you're, if it, if it's 75/25 split, I think, you know, then it is a 75/25 split. It's not, it's not split equal.
Shouldn't be like ad hoc every time we do something. It's just a lot of effort.
I mean, I will say this, though. At the end of the day, I think this community does present a united front. And, you know, we've heard that on a call recently, I had joined you on, that this community presents a united front. And we both reassured them, you know, we don't always agree, but we're always going to be united when we are talking to economic development prospects. I think at the end of the day, that is the main message we always want to.
I talk, I talk with mayors all over the state of Kentucky. And every mayor has a county judge. I mean, they're city and county, you know, and so they agree, they disagree, they, you know, they work through any diff, I mean, this is, this is the way Kentucky government is set up. And so at any rate, I just wanted to make sure that I, I feel like I, we've got a consensus here. If there's anybody that doesn't agree, you know, I'd like to know either privately or some other way, you know, but I, I would just, I would just ask the, the county to move forward with us on the, on, on, on the municipal order we've already passed to pay for 75%.
Yeah, that's important to me. I'll just tell you from.
Any other questions, comments?
One thing that's just on my mind is just the jobs for the community. You know, that's all that's going through my head. Like, as elected officials, our goal should be to provide opportunities for our community. And this is going to provide major opportunity for jobs. Because I always hear things about needing more jobs, and this will bring some, hopefully, good paying jobs. So I just, yeah, hope that message is clear to the county as well.
Jobs, jobs are really important, but as we heard earlier tonight, so is housing.
Yeah.
So we've got, you know, you can bring people, you can bring people in here, you know, but you got to put them somewhere. And if there's somebody, you know, to Lacy's earlier comments, I mean, if somebody's trying to get on their feet, and they get one of these jobs, they got to have a place to live, you know, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you, Bruce.
Appreciate.
I mean, we, we trust you. We have, you know, we support you, and we help fund GPED. We believe in you. And I think that's really the message that we want to portray. We want you to be successful. Because that helps all of us. I think we all ran on more jobs in our community. That's just a phrase that you're always going to use. And you are our source to do that. So thank you for all you do.
The city and county are your two biggest investors.
Yeah.
You know, so, and we're, we're your two biggest supporters. And the city and county also fund the IDA. And so we're all in. And we appreciate all the efforts that you make. And, you know, we'll, we'll look forward to moving forward with the spec building.
Like I said, we certainly appreciate you and all you do for us. So.
We'll work it out. Congratulations on getting it ran. I think that's great.
It was, it's an accomplishment for sure.
Yeah, it is. Two million. It's a lot of money.
All right. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more update, and that's from Melanie Townsend. Hi, Melanie. And we've got a big project going on at the riverfront. If anybody's been down there lately, you can see that they're moving dirt, and there, there's a lot going on. And so people want to know, what is, what is the update, Melanie? And you're going to tell us.
I'm going to tell. Thank you all for having me, Mayor, Ms. Scherz, City Manager, City Clerk.
Always a pleasure to have you, Melanie.
You never know when I'm going to be up here. I may be closing right away, selling property, building things. So just.
Hey, Melanie, I'm sorry. If you wouldn't mind to pull the microphone, that way folks at home can hear your lovely voice.
My good East Tennessee accent. So quick history, just to kind of show the, where we come from. 2018, made our first grant application. To 2024, to start construction. So that's, that was a big accomplishment. You can see all the steps that were taken, all the red tape that we went through, all the meetings and hashing out project details. But we are now going. So everybody's seen this. I just want to say, the bottom square, I'm going to refer to as the convention center opening. The middle square, I will refer to as the commons. And the upper right square will be the riverfront. That just makes it easier when I'm talking about what's going on, that we all kind of know what I'm talking about area wise. So right now, the commons area, we're going to be starting concrete work. So they'll be putting in the sidewalks, or they'll be framing them up. Jay's Electric, one of our local contractors, is down there right now doing some of the electrical work. The convention center opening is ongoing. That re-alignment of that area, it's a mess. Of course, they got it all dug out, and then it rained. And then it rained some more. So they are still down there working. They're expecting about six to eight more weeks for that to be finished. It's a big project area. There's a lot of work to be done in that area. And like Darren and the mayor said, if you've been down to the riverfront, they have started the demolition on the riverfront. So all of the handrails, all of the sidewalks, those overlooked things, I don't really know what to call them, they're demolished. I will say this month, for Jim Smith Contracting, they can tear things down. They do a really good job. But no, they're one of our great partners with, with local construction offers. So that is going to be ongoing for a few weeks. They're getting ready for our next big section. We did Close Water Street, so I want to just make an appeal to everyone. When you go down to the riverfront, please don't go behind barricades. Don't walk around them. Don't drive around them. If you see a barricade, it's there for your protection and for the protection of our contractors.
Are both lanes closed?
Just one lane.
No, just one lane. It's just one lane. But you can't, you can't walk around them. It's just, there's a lot of work going on. Yes, just a one lane closure. Our goal is for Broadway, the Broadway opening to stay open. There will be times when we have to close it for temporary times when they're bringing in materials or concrete trucks and things like that. But the goal is for the Broadway opening to stay open. So you can drive down through there, you can walk down through there, but please just stay out of the construction area, but down river there. And this is the exciting one. We're in CJ Mahan. We'll start mobilizing. They're not sure. It'll be the week of June the 23rd or June the 30th, so end of the month. So what does that mean? This, oh, there it goes, sorry. So this is kind of what it will look like down there. The black lines are the work, the pier area. And then, oh, he's ended up doing this. This will be their main barge, where the crane will be setting, where they'll be doing their pile driving and, and bringing in the pieces of concrete, the precast concrete. And then this is a spud barge. I don't know what that means. I just used the words. But anyway, so that's what it's going to look like. So you can see, here's what it would look like with a, with a boat there. And as they come up river, they'll get closer, and then they'll be working up here. So we're trying to keep it open for the boats as much as possible. There may come a time where they need to move down to Kentucky and not use that Broadway area. So that's kind of what it'll look like once they get onsite and get ready to start. So that's kind of our current. So what do we got coming up next? Mahan will be onsite in between June and September, basically after the Fourth of July, really, but they'll be onsite. They'll start driving piles and sheet piling. So they're planning to work on Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM. That is within our noise ordinance timeframe for construction. And then they will be working on Saturdays from 7:00 to 3:30. So that's, that's where they're planning to work. And while they're working, Jim Smith Contracting will be working on the excursion plaza portion of the riverfront. So this is, this is what a diesel powered pile driver looks like. And, because I've gotten lots of questions about this.
That will be loud.
Yeah. We are going to. Stop, stop, stop. Worked for me before. So that's what it's going to sound like downtown. Much louder than that. But until you've really heard that, I had never heard one until we did their Buckner Lane Bridge project.
The what bridge project?
The Buckner Lane Bridge. We had to drive piles for that. And it was, it was very loud. They, and it would just echo down through there. So hopefully, being behind the, the flood wall will give a little bit of muffling sound. But it's going to be loud, and it's going to be constant.
How long will that take?
Before, they're, they're planning to be done by Labor Day. So about two months, July, August, maybe the first of September. So that's their goal. It depends on weather. It depends on river levels. Right now, we are at 44 inches on the year, when normally we would be at 24 inches. So that's one of the reasons why it's kind of taking a little time to get real momentum going on the project. But.
And they're not working 24 hours a day?
No, 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 no. They're working five 10s and then eight on Saturday. So they will not be working on the Fourth of July at all. It will be completely shut down and locked off. So we'll be ready to have our Fourth of July celebrations.
And I was going to ask you about the Fourth of July. So what part of the riverfront will be shut down? Is it just that Riverwalk area on that side?
The, yes, the riverfront area will be closed. Schultz Park to the transient dock will be open. So what's open now will be open. Foot of Broadway will be available. So we've, we've talked with parks, because really, what's going to be closed is the riprep area. So there wasn't a whole lot of seating. I mean, you could have probably stood up there. But so we're trying to minimize the disruption to the Fourth of July festival. So anyway, we have to build during the summer, and everybody wants to have festivals during the summer. So we're trying to work around it as much as possible. So, so once they drive the piles, they'll start building the pier. So they're hoping to be done with the pier by February of next year. So we've got that. And then we'll have the substantial completion in March or June, between March and June of 2026. So another picture of the, of the pier that is going to be built. So we got the commons in intersection. Hopefully, by the end of August, the convention center opening will be finished. Once again, this is what it will look like. We are taking out the driving lane parallel to the flood wall and turning that into a multimodal pathway. And we are changing the, the configuration of entering and exiting there at Fifth Street. So we're hoping that that'll make it easier for people to get through there. And it will improve traffic flow and the danger of that intersection as it is now.
Could you go to the previous slide? I think we've talked about this, or, no, it was a map, showed the long pier.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Have we talked about, I know that there's an issue with silt deposition behind the transient boat dock. And of course, this will be the same, I guess, we, we've already analyzed.
We have vetted through that. We've worked through, we had to get for our permitting process, yes. But with the transient boat dock, also, a big portion of the silt was the earth and embankment that we built out to kind of calm that. That has been as much of, instead of just the pier itself, of being.
So pier is.
So, so yes.
It's vacant underneath it. It's just, it's just floating on the surface.
Yes. And it does, and it backs up. But yes, we have gone through all of that. And part of the permitting process, the very extensive permitting process with our state and federal partners, looked at, at the impacts of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And most of the pier is elevated.
It is.
So it doesn't have any sheet piling or anything under it. And that was one of the reasons we did that was for, to let, let flow, that we won't be interrupting flow. But yes, good question. Yes, that was definitely a big consideration in the design. Was there any questions about the convention center opening? I think we got over it.
I do. I was over there today. So the exit will, will still be there to Park Avenue.
Yes.
That's the, okay, that's the exit right there. Okay.
Yeah, the top front.
And you'll still be able to go in at the Holiday Inn.
Holiday Inn, but you can exit. But this time, you won't have to merge on. You'll come straight and make a right turn.
Straight through. Well, there'll be a turn lane that you can turn down Park Avenue. And there'll be one you can go straight across if, if you want to go to Martin Luther King. And then you'll come down Park Avenue and turn right into there.
Oh.
So it's, there's three lanes.
Three lanes.
Well, because you have the turn lane, a straight lane, and then.
And the inbound lane.
So more like a normal intersection. There just, will not be like a light. We won't put, there won't be a light there.
And the multimodal pathway is going to be like an extension of the Greenway Trail that, that people running, biking, walking can get.
Yes.
So that's the way they would get to the Greenway Trail. They would just take a right there and go.
Go straight up, and you'll hit the Greenway Trail right there.
Yeah, but I mean, coming this way, coming the other way.
This way. Technically, you would go this way.
That way, yeah, right.
And hit it up there at the top of Campbell Street.
Yeah.
But yeah. This is also, this is connecting down to Sixth Street and by Midwest Terminal to the, the dump. We're trying to get people to not walk through, through Midwest Terminal, but to give them a very nice, safe path to go across here when they're walking for, for the equipment show and things like that.
What are the purple?
Those are trees.
Oh, okay.
But they probably won't be like tree trees, because we don't want to block the murals that are on.
Yeah.
It'll probably be bushes, like lower bushes, but it's some form of landscaping.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Be working on the commons through March of next year. So this is the commons. We looked, we looked at this several times, and nothing has really changed from the original concept. Lots of green space. If you go down there right now, and you come into Pretty Silk Park, you can see where they're starting to mound up the dirt here for the, the tiered seating. And they'll be pouring concrete and asphalt and doing the pavers after they get all the, the layers ready. Any questions about the commons?
I will make just a comment for purposes of understanding when we're looking at that. If you look at the, the row square, the center circle there, and come to the left along the flood wall, in the white section right below your finger, this is the area where the Aloft Hotel property is going to go, just for, for, for purposes of, you know, the Aloft Hotel property is going to go, just for, for, for purposes of, you know, tying that into that, both, both the lanes on either side of that will remain open. So you can, to the left of that, you'll be able to go in behind the Holiday Inn and then Express, and then tie it over to, or the Holiday Inn Hotel, and then tie into the convention center. You just won't, as a reminder, you won't be able to drive the link like you can now.
Right, you won't, they'll go this way.
Right.
So I have to admit, I didn't look on the city's website to see if any of these pictures are on there, but I get people asking me all the time, how can we see what it's going to look like? If they're not on the website, can we get some pictures posted somewhere?
I'm sure they're on there. There's a build grant specific page on the website.
Okay, and so I could just refer them to the city website to the build grant page, and they can see all of this. Okay.
You know, also, what'd be, what would be nice, at, at the appropriate time, you know, is if we could take a few picture, pictures and put them on there as well, so people from outside the community that have a connection to Paducah, or people that live, you know, that, that are not going to come down and see it, you know, could kind of gauge some of the progress.
Right.
Sure. Paducah Drone's keeping us informed.
Yeah.
Facebook about the sports flex, so maybe, that might be a way. Send him an email, yeah. He's usually, he's very good. I've used his pictures on several things to get a good bird's eye view of what's going on, so.
Vic's okay.
Yeah. We, we always give him credit for it.
Yeah.
We use one of his pictures. So, any other questions about the commons area?
No.
We're going to work on the commons, and then the next section, we've, we've got some intersection improvements, and I didn't put a picture of this up. Sixth and Park Avenue is there where the Midwest Terminal is. We're doing some sidewalk, or not sidewalk, crosswalks there, painting just to try to help people when they're, they're interacting with that intersection. Third and Madison is over beside the Walker Hall. We'll be putting in a bus stop. And Second and Jefferson on the Quilt Museum corner, we'll be putting in a bus stop also as part of our multimodal. We've talked to Pat, and they're on board to, you know, come and pick people up at those intersections as, as they're there. Substantial completion, June of twenty twenty-six. So that's, that's our goal, that's what we're shooting for, that's what our grant is expecting us to do, so that's our, that's our, that's the goal, is to be finished June of twenty twenty-six. Questions?
One year.
Thank you, Scrum.
Right?
Yep, we've got a year to go. So I think, you know, it's a big project, it's an important project, and it would be good, you know, to, to have you come back in ninety days and tell us that you're still on track.
All right. We can do that, anytime. We appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We appreciate all your hard work, and thank you for being here tonight.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. And one of the things also, Mayor Commission, that we did want to emphasize, this is an active construction zone. There will be disruption, there will be noise, but a year from now, we're all going to look back and say, wow, what a benefit this is to our community. But we've got a little pain to get through, so bear with us from the public. But again, just please, please be mindful of the construction area and, and stay by, stay away from the barricades.
Thank you.
Well, you bring up a good point, pain, and that is, we got two big projects going on in the city at the same time, and, you know, one of them is the outdoor sports park, you know, and there's, that doesn't affect as many people, but still, you know, people who use the Greenway Trail, I mean, there, there's plenty of pain to go around until we get these big projects done, so. Okay, we will move to comments. City Manager, any comments?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioners? Yes, sir?
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mayor, I had an opportunity to attend the public meeting last night for the revitalization of the South Side, and it was absolutely a great meeting, a lot of great comments, and so I wanted to take this opportunity to, again, to thank Ms. Carol Gault and her entire team for what they've done in these last few months, and for the presentation that they made on last evening. But I would be, I think, remiss if I did not remind us or let us know of the reoccurring themes that came up last night, and those themes were include us, talk to us, memories. We have memories in this community, and we want to, our children, to, to enjoy those memories as well. One of the things that we did not talk about prior to now, and perhaps we're going to get an opportunity to talk about it a little later, and that is, as years progress and as taxes begin to increase, hopefully, we can sit down and talk about something that will help some of the residents' children and their grandchildren to be able to come and enjoy some of those same memories, if that, if that makes any sense. In other words, we don't want to get to a point, and I think I've said it before, where people who live on the South Side now cannot actually come back and afford the South Side, nor can their children or their grandchildren. So I just wanted to, again, to talk about what I think is a great thing happening right now, but I also don't want us to forget some of the people who live on the South Side now and who want to be able to enjoy it as well as their children and, or grandchildren. So again, I say thank you.
Well, I did not have an opportunity to, to attend the meeting last night, but I, I heard really great things about the meeting, and I'm very encouraged, you know, by the discussion and comments, and so whenever there's progress, there's always a little pain.
Yeah.
And I'm sure there will be some pain as we go through this, but we certainly will endeavor to keep, you know, your thoughts and guidance.
We'll have some preventive pain.
In, in, in mind as we, as we go forward, you know.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
So a lot of great things going on in the South Side.
I might comment on that, too. I attended as well, but there is this still love of the history of the South Side, and no one wants to lose that, so I think, and I think Carol's team is keeping that in mind, too. And so we'll just all keep it in mind as we move forward, so.
Very good. Comments, sir? No comments down here? Okay, we, we will have an executive session, we will not be taking any action, and I would please invite the city clerk to please make the motion.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to.